Do you want to please join us in the presidency?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Do you think I have any items that I'd like to have removed from the consent document?
I do not.
I do not. Anything for public comments before we get into our special activities, which will be the hearings. So other than things to be talked about in the hearings, anything I have to bring up? Okay. Moving into special activities, we have a public hearing with resolution 5459, a resolution to approve, modify, or deny the zone change request of Corey Cummings' amendment to amend the resolution that map for 2.209 acres from suburban residential SR1 to general residence B2 and dispense with second reading. Jeffrey?
We do need to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing as our motion to do so.
Mr. Mearsfall. Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Wade.
Yes. All right. I have brought up the location. I have to show where we're at, the funnel hill where it hits the government county. So the last property in the township in the north side. This is aerial from Warren County's audit website. I'm showing the parcel. This is the county line I am moving to where we're shooting in the funnel hill change. Any things? In June of this year, I received a zoning complaint about non-repair and theme activity occurring in accessory structure of this property. From that, 30 days, there was a little violation. The applicant decided to make an application, which is this application, resume the property. In the district township's zoning resolution, there's two different types of repair. There's a minor and a major repair. The major repair includes theme, so a minor does not. Only a major has theme, and the major is only allowing the B2. That's why they request the original business B2 classification. Looking at zoning classifications, the north and Washington Township, there's agriculture and a plan unit, residential. In the district township, to the east, we have suburban residential. To the south, we have residential R1. And then to the west, we have R2 PUD. Looking at the land use plan, this is map four from sewer area to the area of anticipated sanitary sewer. On map six, for the road classification, classified as a local, you know, I'm sure on funnel hill, probably has a different classification today in 2005 that was where it was classified as a local road. And then for plain area 10, to the map 10, I show the plain area to be in area 1, which had circumstantial substantial development or connective development. So that brings us to map 11, which is our land use plan. And the property is in this butter color, butter color being suburban residential, the commercial areas are anywhere. When this went before, Warren County Regional Planning recommended deny their requests. When this went before the zoning commission, they recommended deny all their requests, saying if the land use plan existed, area remained residential, commercial nuisance intensity was not compatible surrounding zoning classification, regardless if it was a B1, B2, or PUD. So with that, I can answer questions before you go ahead.
I do not have any. I don't want to. This, we had this one on the floor and the act on the last year.
That's correct. So we tabled it until this meeting from the last month's first meeting. That's in his presidency.
Okay. All right. I have no questions of you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Should I have to consider, could you move forward?
Yes.
I guess so.
Good. State your name, or give us your address, because we are recording this.
Yes, Corey Cummings, 9959 Tunnel Hill Road.
Okay. We know what you want to do. Do you have any special comments you'd like to make?
No, I made my comments last time. I think I was going to go a different route and kind of go to my roots and stick with mobile and stick with dealers and paintless sense of work from that. So I'm with another plan. I don't think this one's going to go through, so.
Want to withdraw this, or do you prefer us to vote on it? It doesn't matter, that's my vote.
We'll vote on it, see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If I have any questions for that, please do. Okay, with that, I'd like to close this public hearing.
Before we close, there are some individuals for this application. I'm not sure if they want to speak or not, but they are present, so.
If anybody would like to speak, come to the podium and state your name, please.
Gina Cropper, 15 Jennifer Court. We are here for a previous meeting. We just want to say opposition to it. The surrounding area, it just does not fit. I can go into more, but we're just going to voice our opposition.
Okay. Anybody else in support or composition? All right. I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing and leave the meeting the regular meeting. Sumo.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Mearsfall. Mr. Wade. And with that, answer any of the comment questions that poured right down. Today is our motion to approve, modify, or deny this zone request change.
I will make the motion to deny.
Second. Mr. Mearsfall. Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Wade. And with that, I'd like to close this, close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. We're ready for 5467. Motion to that. Second. Mr. Mears, or Gabbard. Yes, Mr. Mearsfall. Yes, Mr. Wade. Yeah.
All right, so what we have before the team meeting is text amendment 2003-1, which is initiated on summer. The trustees, I spent some time with the zoning commission for three months, and they have brought you a different document than what you presented to them as.
Sure.
Ultimately, the reason for some of their changes is that looking at, just to back up on the business, where what's going on, short-term rental is what we're talking about, how to control Airbnb's and those types of activities, where should they be located in jurisdiction, acreages, lot size, setbacks, those types of things, where could they exist as condition use versus regular use and alike. Ultimately, the initial draft was prohibiting them to be in some divisions in anything less than 10 acre lot size, anything above 10 acres, then have the opportunity to go through and have step of use. That acreage could also allow you to, for ever tourism, establish it or PUD, establish it and direct this. So there are an awful lot of regulations associated with the 10 acre and above, when this went before the zoning commission. They had several debates, discussions, and looked at other regulations, and ultimately came back with this text draft, which is based upon Blue Ash, which prohibits all short-term rentals, regardless of acreage. It then establishes definitions for a residential rental, a non-residential rental, a leaseback rental, and a short-term rental, all still being below 30 days, which having its own for the leaseback, something that could exist below, but could discontinue it out through process. And then they decided to put everything into the home occupation prohibition. So does that make sense looking at some of our tests? Currently, we have a tourist home, a bed and breakfast motel, hotel and inn as a prohibitive home occupation. They said if we put short-term rental into that already pre-existing regulation, then it would complicate the others in the list, striking out tourist home, which is something that exists in our code that doesn't have a definition, and then establishing for the R2 and R3 zoning classifications, a link to the home occupation definition so that all residential would reference back to the single point that is prohibited in the home occupation regulation. They also then looked at where these terms exist that we don't find other places. We have summer cottage, exists in our parking regulation, which I have no definition for, and we also have cabin. So those definitions are popping off as things that you say, well, I have a tourist home, doesn't need a short-term rental. So to eliminate some of the misconceptions or areas of just outright lacking regulation, one could say, we decided to do something different. So with that being said, they have plagued with the regulation to extent that what was the regulation with Warren County Regional Planning, without it, is a different document. So the initial document did go for Warren County Regional Planning and was recommended for approval. This is on view as the first entity to look at, since the zoning commission made modifications. So I anticipate they're probably going to have some discussion, want to do further word sniffing, those types of things. So I'll just take you down to their current recommendation. Since they had concerns during the discussion, they wanted to have a kind of rationale for way to encapsulate this three months worth of discussion. So it's a little bit more gritty than what typically occurs. It says the goal of zoning commission was review the text amendments to make amendments as efficient and readable as possible, so the general public knows what's required by the zoning resolution. This update accomplishes by eliminating inconsistencies in terms, prohibits use through existing home occupation regulations. Commissioners expressed concerns of allowing short-term rentals as outlined in the initial draft, by turning residential structures into areas of public assembly without having clear regulations to address health and safety issues, and then have to neighbors that could occur when single family owners wanted to use for travels for nothing years. So that was why they, you know, wanting, so to speak, from your regulations, but they believed this in the regulation that would be better suited for the township. So that's the net bolt. I'm sure those.
Yeah. It's a big range.
And that's, you know, if we need time to look at things as an activity, if we're saying, okay, this is a lot to take in, want to have some things, we can table this public hearing to the next meeting or the next evening meeting. And through that time, I can give you guys some more updates, discussion, we can have that back and forth individually, see if you feel that you're more prepared for the next meeting, if that's something you desire, or this may be exactly what you asked for. So go either way.
I would like to table it so I can look at it somewhere. I did read through it once, but actually most of these things, I have to read two or three times to get the gist of it. And what I know will adjust of it, it's the details that I have not thoroughly absorbed. So that would be my recommendation, whatever these guys want, okay.
No, I feel the same way. I mean, I think there's something that the spirit of it is where we want to head, but I think there's some details that need to. And I've read through it twice, and I'm the one that's championing this call. I'm still not sure I'm ready to.
That's a big change.
Yeah, it's a huge change. And as we've talked about, the goal, what's the goal, what's the process, what's the outcome? And we got to consider all three of those things. It does concern me just drawing off the top that we eliminated it all together for properties under or over 10 acres, based on some of the wedding facilities, places like what's next door to me.
But they would still have an opportunity to get through condition use to establish that. I mean, it would not have a firing.
Right, right. And I feel like there's almost like a loophole there that we could leave open. But yeah, I think the next evening meeting would be appropriate, and then.
I think we probably should have the motion to table this until second meeting, second meeting, maybe so.
Table and process to the first evening meeting, December 1st evening meeting?
First evening meeting.
Yeah. That's no problem at all. I just wanted it, folks were here if you wanted to hear that before you tabled it, just so they, that was an obvious suggestion in that motion. If anybody's had a chance to take a look at this possible legislation and would like to make a comment on it, it is, I'm sure it's on the website.
Yeah, it's been out there, it's on the board, available. I'm seeing most of the people that are here for other cases, but since it's something that affects everyone in the township, has opportunity for discussion.
Okay, let's recess this, this public hearing and go back to regular session and then obtain the motion, the motion to do so. Sumo. Second. Mr. Mearsfall. Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Wade. Mr. Wade, not to, just motion to continue it, to instead of table, yeah, just to continue it, yeah. Let's do it like that. I'll do it. Let's do a separate motion to continue that. Yeah. Close. Might have a motion to continue this public hearing to the next evening meeting. Second. Mr. Gabbard. Yes, Mr. Mearsfall. Yes, Mr. Wade. Thank you. Then we have a third public hearing. This is with resolution 5468, a resolution to approve, modify, or deny the request of Amanda and Nathan Ramsey for a stage two preliminary site plan review for mixed-use plan unit development, NUPUD, and dispensed with the second reading. Yep. We need to, so motion to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Second. Mr. Mearsfall. Yes, Mr. Gabbard. Yes, Mr. Wade. Yes. Thank you. Then we have a third public hearing. This is with resolution 5468, a resolution to approve, modify, or deny the request of Amanda and Nathan Ramsey for a stage two preliminary site plan review for mixed-use plan unit development, NUPUD, and dispensed with the second reading. Yep. We need to, so motion to recess the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Second. Mr. Mearsfall. Yes, Mr. Gabbard. Yes, Mr. Wade. Yes.
All right, so we're looking at property that hashed here, it's in purple, hatched around State Route 48, just north of Turman Drive. So on March 13th, 2023, the stage one was approved with 18 conditions. This is loading just a little bit slower, so this is a question. This was the approved stage one plan. Ultimately, the commercial area was relocated, to recall from being in the closer State Route 48, to more or less push them back to property, and then eye colored on the area in red to identify as commercial. So they're using a combined beach field system for the five-bedroom home and the barn, warehouse, production building, office, restroom, and according to my July 26 discussion with Health Department, that combined system is something they wait for. So a little bit unique since that we usually don't have these combined things occurring, and it's not going to OEPAs regulations, it's going to stay with the county. All right, so this is the updated mill that was put forth on October 31st of this year. I have coloring also, because it's not going to, you know. Ultimately, what you, she said, I have a master colored pencil, and that's a pretty good one. So the green is the open space. From stage one, there was an addition of open space, decent values, that's been added. I'll color in the red, this is the commercial area, we'll look at it in greater detail shortly. And in the purple, I have the residential kind of site. So there is a gravel driveway that's going to serve both the home and the commercial area. There's going to be a concrete apron, a State Route 48, to allow traffic in and out of the property. All right, so zooming a little bit on the commercial area. One of the things that was required in stage one to be sufficient, at least 100 foot setback on property lines, for commercials, you can have 105 foot loading setbacks, it's keeping all the other setbacks by grid distances, the closest. Initially, when you saw the stage one, you just saw the square of the barn, warehouse, production facility, did not have the porch, I'll give you that in a little bit detail that's just showing porch. And then the fence in the area is also going to have a covered, partially covered panel. But still, the fencing area will have a six-foot fence around it, and outdoor storage. The parking area is perpendicular to the building, four parking spaces are proposed, and one loading area, if you upgrade, to concrete for seeping roads. So we'll look at the elevation of the barn. So as I spoke about, at stage one, there's discussion about the building area. The building area is everything that's contained between the walls, essentially has a wall, so not underneath, under roof, everything between walls. A hook, you know, that looks at is everything that would be underneath the roof. So a different tweak of that. Ultimately, that tweak is what comes down to the overhangs and the porches. So those abandons are something that the zoning commission looked at. So the yellow is the area that I was just talking about, being the building area. The yellow and orange is your footprint. So we have a main area, we have garage, porch, overhang specifying. The application showing the entire footprint to be 7,670 square feet, when I do my calculations, it'd be something that's about 7,310 square feet. So we're looking at materials, concrete, metal siding, roof, metal roof, and wood accents, floor structure, so that's okay. So let's look at the residential component. So we're looking at the purple. So it's comprised of a house, which is an L, and then you have porch area, another porch area of grass, pool area, poolhouse, and barn. So during stage one, the maximum step forth for those breach structures was 9,700 square feet. We'll look at the diagram, excuse me, elevation for the site, different callouts, talk about those here in a moment. Let's look at floor plan, this is the first floor. So during the building area discussion, so the yellow was 7,200 square feet, the porches had somewhere, I'm thinking specifying to be 3,767, I'm finding to be 4,394. So the footprints are specifying to be about 11,594 square feet. We look at the second story, so just the L, the porch isn't standing up to the second story, the valvings in the right. I'm thinking specifying 1,007, I'm getting closer to 2,040, the loft area, six-foot out loft area, and fourth was 1,513, I'm giving them 2,060. So it all comes down to the final numbers, a couple of ways we can look at things. There's total coverage area, which is specified, so everything they have under roof, first floor, second floor, heated, not heated, all that fun stuff, comes down to their specification 13,687, I'm finding 16,374. So some math issues going on there, but ultimately, the footprints expanded because of the porches, the building areas, same was what was stage one. And when the zoning looked at it, they said, well, that's normal expansion, you expect a home to have porches and the like, so they thought that would be a discussion for this body if those numbers are felt to be appropriate or not. So if we look at a basic floor plan for the barn and the poolhouse, at this point in time, there's no porches, overhangs, and the like, but fourth, and then you need the 1,500 square feet and 1,000 square feet goes out when you're in stage one. Pool area is a large area, a little more comprised of pools, and they have a rectangle specifying to be there of 3,200 square feet, but the pool is not going to be that large on its pool area specifying. So the residential accessories come back before seven-year approval. So maybe it showed the footprint and the like, but when it should come from that thing, it's a stage three, so it'll be a discussion with myself, so I'll make sure those minimums are met. All right, so with that being said, let's look at some open space. So the green area is open space that's going to be cleared for the property. We have a ribbon of circles for property, and they have a weapon area in the rear. So minimum required per, in the resolution is 5,780 acres. They put 6.30 acres of open space. They've also provided some drone aerial shots of the site in a field for where things are going to be in what exists as current vegetation. Typically, you have a tree count that occurs, and say, there's so many evergreens, I have this, so many shrubs, I have this, so many citrus trees I have in the light. Ultimately, we're using that information and then go for buffer requirements, meaning seeing if they're going to use those or not. And we'll see in a minute that they've proposed to go ahead and establish the buffer requirements per the regulations, and we, everything that they're showing here on the aerial, and the drone shot has extra above and beyond trees, because there are tents fixed on there, it's a 15 habitat we're removing. So we're going to want to make sure from a zoning standpoint, we have year-round protection, and it's something the zoning commission put forth in their discussion. We're going to say, around this commercial area, minimum trees. So if we start looking at my additional colors, building for the barn is, has a foundation elevation at 965.5 feet. The orange lawn is at 962 square feet. Good buildings and contours. Let's try again. We've got a contour of 962 feet. The pink or purple color you have there is at 961 feet, and the blue around the section of, is at 960. Now, that's great, Jeff, why are you telling me these things? This is why. And we start looking at where the trees are, and these are four-foot evergreen trees that are leaving a quantity and minimum expectation of zoning for buffer requirement. Along the north, there's nine trees that are proposed, and they are proposed at the 962 foot. So if you have a four-foot tree, you're then going to have one foot above, so you're going to have one foot just above the foundation that's going to show how it's buffer. Everything above there, as it grows, we'll get there, but initial, it's going to be a foot above the foundation. Along the eastern boundary, there's 19 trees, and they are, they're going to be buffering the foundation, because they're four foot below that location at start. To the south, then we also have a one foot above foundation at start. So as you look at the drones, after we'll talk about feces and vegetation that's in there, there may be enough that this is something that's not issued from public standpoint, from trustee standpoint, because I just want to make sure that we're leaving gnomes for buffering as they have been put into installation. So they didn't know the vegetation that exists north, east, and south. And the zoning commission looked at it, they said, let's just make sure that we have this minimum, they didn't take into consideration the conflict. So it's part of the discussion for this evening. I can, about that for detail if you desire. Other elements, we want to look at the barn is on the southern corner, so the southeast corner, there's going to be a wall light, a 910 foot height, and it has a 50-foot spread of white, so it should be a normal farm light, to know that it might impact the surrounding properties. Signage. So signs located outside of their required open space, outside of road right away, 24 square foot sign. There's also proposal to have split rail fence added to the parage along the road right away, so parallel State Route 48, and proposing to have a gate to restrict access on the property sufficiently in so that people can get in and out back up on State Route 48. Two proposals for signs, fact teller is difference between the stadium rationale for what they would choose. Ultimately, we just wanted to have specification about what should we anticipate seeing on looking at the site for square footage and design. When this went before Warren County Regional Planning, they recommended approval with five conditions, when this went before the zoning commission. They modified some of the requests, we talked about having the evergreen trees being within 25 foot out of the barn, and that's, ultimately, they want to make sure of the height. And when they talked about the different conditions from Warren County Regional Planning, elements that were missing were the same, to make sure that they often have that filled in with trustees. But there were some discussions with zoning, excuse me, at the regional planning, about the open space, wanting to have a conservation thing over top. And this is something that typically exists when you have flats, and you then have Warren County Regional Planning, they didn't enforce that and such things. That's not occurring, the zoning commission said, the open space is what the open space is. You have this boundary, you have this expectation that things are going to remain in the central area. We want to make sure that these areas that are required around the commercial, I'm leaving minimums, I'll say it's before, minimums for that, but they didn't fill it with conservation movement that was required for such property. So I think that'll be very detailed to look on that. But that is the intent of the zoning commission, so therefore, what you have in consideration this evening is 12 conditions that have been put forth with the most recent this evening is twelve conditions that have been put forth with the most recent application reference back. So if there's anything that you want to specify, it's given differently, we will strike modify and add to this section of it, but if you're comfortable with this middle, that was the more recent middle, which was October thirty-first and November first, but this year, it's been taken care of in the first draft. With that, I can answer questions.
If I have any questions for Jeff at this time? Anybody in the audience have any questions for Jeff at this time? Okay, now we'd like to have the applicant come forward, if we'd like everything to talk about or have, come on up.
Josh Lyle, Apex Engineering Service, ten fifty-eighth North University Boulevard.
Nathan Ramsey, seven ninety-eighth Part View Avenue, eleven in Ohio.
I did, we were talking, the one comment about the screening, being that we're digging a pond, we're generating more dirt than we need. We were talking about the area around the barn, going out thirty feet, and maybe just dropping one foot, and then going down at a three to one or four to one to be existing to create a nice thirty-foot flatter area around the building to do a cleaning, so that they are, you know, a foot or two below the floor of the building, and not like four or five feet. I think that was really the only big comment.
Yeah.
Jeff, will they have to submit?
And also need a revised grievance claim.
Yeah, this will be something, by the time they come back, this is, let me step back. If that's a condition for approval, then beginning of it, how that be, that they'll make the supplemental prior to their stage three, or that you need to take specifics that you want to come back for the spotting for review, or just coming to staff, so there's a couple of different ways. I think that can be, that particular thing is certainly a staff item.
I think so, absolutely.
I think our supplemental deadline for three is November twenty-ninth, and we'll probably do a revised grievance claim by then.
Do we have any questions on that? I don't know, Apex? I don't know. Anybody in the audience have any questions for Mr. Palmer or Jeff? Okay, here, and then there's a motion to close the panel.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah. Now, I guess, let's add on to that, and we can.
Mr. Wade, just sort of clear, I'm not sure if there's individuals here that, I'm not sure if they have questions for me, they just have questions for you. So, if you do, yeah, if you don't, that's fine, I just want to make sure that.
No, I, I think we're comfortable with the application, this is under the purpose of screening the property.
Thanks, any testimony in support or opposition?
Not sure if I called both, we'll do it anyway. Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Okay. Back in our regular meeting, and at this time, I'd like to entertain that motion to approve or modify or deny the request, along with the, oh wait, I do have something. Sorry. Four parking spaces. Is that going to be sufficient based, I don't have something that's based on so many parking spots for footage in a commercial area?
We do, we apply, we do. A couple of different ways in which you could go about calculating where things could exist with our parking requirements. Ultimately, four was something that was appropriate, though if there's something that you want to have additional, you can always require additional. The way I, which I've looked at parking, was that.
If it meets our current requirements, then I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yeah, if they're finding they're going to need to modify it, here comes the fund, they're going to have to come back. So if they can't maneuver, or if the trucks that they're driving that day don't fit in there, that's going to become an issue for future refinements. But at this point in time, we would expect to have four, unless you're wanting to put a maximum to grow to, and that's the only other way in which it could be solved this evening, is that.
No, that's, I think, we're comfortable with that. Okay, now, if we proceed with the, we can have a motion yet for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Before we continue on, just for my clarification, the applicant proposed an updated grievance claim, was that intended any part of the motion for approval, or was that something that she did not see necessary?
No, I think we need to include that.
You want that, so you want me to.
So that would be amended as number thirteen.
Yeah, all right.
So let's, so we're going to do modification.
We're going to move to amend, to add that condition, condition thirteen, and Mr. Palmer can write it in now, if that's okay?
Sure.
All right, let's make that motion, and then we'll, we'll move to amend it to do that, and then we'll move to approve the amended resolution.
So we're going to amend the resolution first?
Right.
Is there a motion to amend the resolution and include the changes?
To add as condition thirteen.
So what I understood from the asking was that they're supposedly put a thirty-foot pad around the existing commercial area, the structure, so that the starting height for the trees would be at that, of course, being below the grievance.
Was it at the point, or within a foot of the point? I think it's kind of a moving target with the amount of dirt turning out.
Yeah, so is there an expectation that you would see, that you'd be at the elevation that you prefer it to be at?
I think it's better than the, than the one foot elevation, but we'd be okay with me, but.
So if the barn's at nine hundred and sixty-five, do you want it to not be below nine hundred and sixty-five for thirty feet out?
That's a bit low. That's going to be moving a lot of dirt.
Drainage.
Yeah, it's got to be, there's got to be a pinch there, so.
Yeah.
Um, over a thirty-foot stretch, I would think, nine sixty-three, two feet.
Two feet max, I'm fine with that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so fall below, will not fall below nine hundred and sixty-three?
For thirty feet.
I'm going to let you write that in, Jeff, the, the, but that's the mo, once Mr. Palmer writes, that's the, is that, that's the motion to amend, correct?
That's right. So amend with item number thirteen.
Yeah, and who made that motion?
I did.
Right, that motion, Mr. Corollis.
All right, so Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
All right, with that amendment, now you need to approve the amended resolution with, with condition thirteen.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amended, motion, or resolution fifty-four sixty-eight with, including amendments thirteen?
Second?
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
I like the term, we didn't have a word for it.
You're not the first.
Watch the video, that was what we did wrong.
You're not the first one to tell me that.
Well, I wanted to say that.
I appreciate that.
I mean, I like you a lot, you're a good guy.
I'm sure.
I know you.
But, but, it's a good point.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm actually going to do like a, like a.
Yeah, I'm like.
That's true. Well, that's what I love about the, against the terrific rush.
Oh, lawyer just left, notwithstanding Mr. Stipper sitting in the audience.
Dick Piper.
Oh, okay. You know, big voice.
He almost made, should have just popped out of his nose, I mean, he had a concern that maybe he should have issued, so.
Anything else under special activities at this time?
I have nothing else to bring, sir.
All right. Moving on to fiscal business, that's the fiscal audit report.
Yes, sir, I have before you, when we approved a fire engine that the chief wanted to buy at the last meeting in October, we found out the vendor wants a P O for this, and that's a legal document that we have to do, and so to do that, we have to do a supplemental appropriation that, for that amount of money, we're going to be paying for that, and then I can create a purchase order, and then that will lock in the order to make sure that we have the savings that Jeff, or not Jeff, that Steve worked so hard to get for us. We will be able to keep that, even though it's encumbered, the money stays in the fund, we'll be able to keep garnering interest on that while the unit is being built, and we won't get the unit until November twenty-fifth.
So we're really just directing you to issue a purchase order?
Generally, you have to do a supplemental before I can do, I mean, you authorized me to create a purchase order, and you told me to buy it, but you have to have a supplemental to, I'll be able to do that.
Encumbered.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about resolution fifty-four sixty-nine? Hearing none, is there a motion to direct report to issue a purchase order for the purchase of the same property?
Second?
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all you got, that's, that's all I need, that's all I got. Okay. True, I need, I need to add to that, that resolution we're discussing with the second reading, and declaring emergency, declare an emergency. Is that okay? Everybody accept that? And that's what the resolution is for.
Right.
Yep. And that's all you have, perhaps?
Yes, sir.
Okay. New business under planning and zoning?
I was going to say, what a boomerang.
We have a nuisance request for a property that, I know that you have been copied various times in emails regarding the extenuating of derby cars, refrigerant derby cars and the like. We thought that after their season, this would be over, but they've come back.
Yes, they have.
So since they've come back, and we told them the next time they come back, we would for this body, and request it to be a nuisance, that's what I'm asking this evening. Now, when we were on the property earlier in the week, there was one vehicle in front, there were parts, but I believe that several of the vehicles have made their way to the backyard behind the fence. So, the way it's written is anything that's not in enclosed structure is subject to this regulation as a nuisance information. So, that is what you have before you. I can ask some questions?
Looking at this, this afternoon, now, this is more than a frequent flyer, we're wasting a lot of time, personnel. Is there a way we can properly encourage this person to fly right to good neighbor?
I'm hoping that this action as a nuisance would be the fastest way, within trying to be a good neighbor and coach them along, and things like that's working, so we could pump them through as a true common pleaser county court case, and that's going to take a lengthy amount of time towards the year. This will be within a fourteen-day timeline, if this gets their attention and creates the behavior that we're after, then we know that this is an effective manner, if not, we're going to take their items after the fourteen days, so if they acquire more items, we'll bring them back and do that process until it sticks, what they might accept.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to go out of our way, because we have for years, resources in my game.
I'm sure.
So, we know that they're putting these items in the backyard, in this very nice subdivision, behind fence, a kind of, I'm afraid that they're creating a junkyard.
Kind of possible.
And, where they're going to always have things, vehicles and everything, pull parts off, or they're either, I can just see it coming. And, do we have the ability to stop them from doing that in any way? I mean, a junkyard is not acceptable out there.
Yeah, ultimately.
But I know it's all room.
Yeah, if, if we bait the issue of the nuisance, and they create it again, we keep ongoing through this process, you want a way to truly prohibit them from having junk from junk vehicles on the properties, go through a common pleaser court case and have an injunction against the property. So, I'm trying, based upon what I, what I heard from the neighbors for the summer through current, if they want immediate action, and this is a way to get that, we find that we're here weekly with them, monthly with them, we've searched for another option, but that's, this is the most prudent action from talking with.
At this time, most immediate.
Right, the most immediate, the biggest bangs of all, it's really any prosecution options, but also with respect to the backyard, because it's not within plain view or other exceptions and forth, and that we have to get it in straight and warm to check what's out up in, you know, in the backyard, so. And there may be other, to your point, Mr. Wade, there may be other violations, but until unless we are able to, to obtain that evidence, that probable cause, it's hard to kind of advise you to what next step is, because we just don't know what's, we just don't know what's there.
Right.
But we certainly could have that opportunity based on, it sounds to me like if we want to proceed, then we, obviously, a judge would have to tell us, but it feels to me that there's probably, not feels to me, there's probable cause to get more.
I suppose there's a six-foot fence out there?
Yeah.
Probably six. So, we'll be long, we'll be stacking far as well. But, we'll deal with that at the time.
Okay, we have options, if that's what happens.
Any, any other questions or comments on fifty-four seventy? Okay, is there a motion to approve fifty-four seventy in the Spencer, the second reading?
Second?
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yeah.
And Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Jeff, anything?
I'm part of the next one, but I think Matt's going to spearhead that since, he's four, a couple of departments.
Okay, Matt, we have the resolution, fifty-four seventy-one, resolution dedicating a portion of Quirri Creek County's share of funds from American High Street Land to pay for various vehicles, equipment, software, and Spencer with the second reading.
Yeah, so I'm working with Mr. Corollis to try to identify projects and equipment that would improve the service, so we can attach it as well as keep. Those expenses outside of expenses that would be paid with property tax funds, we've identified quite a few things that would just fall in all the present cycle, that we would like to dedicate some of the funds from the ARBA revenue towards. The first thing was a nine or top truck, Orion, which otherwise would have been a twenty-four appropriation, of purchasing a service truck, Orion five fifty, more if they advertise that, you know, costing, we have, but we'd like to buy that to replace Ryan's, the radio, as his service vehicle, I think it's probably most appropriate than a third service vehicle, pickup truck. And this pickup truck will be upfit, so it can serve in seventy-three, and that, a plow truck as well. That's why we've got such a heavy duty, sorry, we asked for such a heavy duty five fifty instead of a twenty-five hundred. Couple of mowers with parks, one is a wide-area mower, mower that nets out with trade for forty thousand, and the old wide-area mower is eleven years old, it's got quite a number of hours on it, though we are getting some pretty good trade for that mower, caning. And the zero-turn is a six-year-old mower, that nets out for seventy hundred dollars for a sixty-ish zero-turn mower, which is, that's pretty good, pretty good price for a sixty-ish zero-turn. And then the, the last component was finally finding some zoning software that works for Mr. Palmer in his zoning apartment. I Works, which is the next.
The original ones.
Did not work very well. So 11.5 is the annual software cost for cloud payment. And altogether, those projects total $326,630, $40,000, 40% for this particular request for our fund.
Okay, Matt, have any questions for that request? Sounds like a good use of that money to, to back up the vehicle.
Very good, Dan. We're depending on 99 for that. Clear 50 right now for a bit.
That's giving a little scary. Is there a motion to approve 5471 as Matt has explained, those items?
Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Resolution to amend the resolution. To add.
So there's three specific gifts that we're asking to accept by resolution. $1,000 each to the fire district as well as police department, and District Mearsfall was able to get River Valley Credit Union to donate their reader board sign to the township as they are completely redoing their site at Main and Central. And they graciously donated their ground notons to the township and then delivered it to us. So we do have a sign in this book with static, static message as well as a lot at the reader board. Probably remember seeing it if you're past America. And we'll look to overhaul it and get it back to the board in order to install it.
Anybody have any questions for 5472? Is there a motion to approve 5472?
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Anything else added at this time?
Police Department, recommendation to purchase signage on High Tech Signs for the South elevation of police headquarters at a cost of $7,039. As the board is aware, the project, the building, the first building had a fixed amount, and we had set aside earlier this year, in this year's budget, additional monies from our safe in order to do some peripheral stuff, furniture and so forth, and this is one of those items was to put signage up there that we separated away from the actual build. So Highland, our High Tech Signs is the company we dealt with through the build, so we'd ask them to come back to them so that it all matches and that we give them that for something, for those signs and so forth.
Is there a motion to, any questions for the chief about this? If not, there's no motion to approve the purchase of this sign and ask the chief to do it. Is there a motion that has effect?
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Okay, we have a recommendation to accept a grant award of $12,000 from the Low Foundation for fiscal year 2324 to benefit police department.
Yeah, we requested the Low Foundation help fund, our three gentlemen that are on the SRT team are required to get night vision, and that's a total cost of $24,000. We've got a separate brand out that we're requesting to fill the difference in that. We'll see how that goes, but a low grant award, $12,000 toward that purchase, if I'd ask the board to accept the arrangement.
Okay, so motion to accept this $12,000 from the Low Foundation.
Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Anything else, chief, at this time?
No, sir. The Christmas sprays coming up, the stuff by charm, these are on, so.
I think I did.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mearsfall, we said this, at this time?
It is. This time, come up with, better get your deal up the phone.
Yeah. Okay, fire district, we have a recommendation to accept a grant award of $12,000 from the Low Foundation for fiscal year 2324 to benefit fire district.
We're in the process of updating our Knox Box keys to electronic keys, so we're putting money toward that problem.
Okay. So motion to accept this $12,000 for the Low Foundation for, for the fire district.
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Anything else at this time? Okay, the Low Department, I have a recommendation to accept a bid of A to Z asphalt contractors appropriated for at $48,150 to install the asphalt pad for the new asphalt bed.
Hey, this is a, this is a good price. I got multiple bids. It's about 430 tons. Asphalt's running between 100 to 110 a ton, so.
How are they going to do that?
Uh, they don't stage it, so it's going to have to be put in eight inches deep. They're going to do a multiple.
They have no product left.
Basically, they get a better discount.
They get a better deal.
They get a better deal.
Yeah.
Agency asphalt. Okay, is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Anything else from the Low Department?
That's it.
I saw some information in the, in the packet for a freight line. Is that going to come back some time soon?
Uh, the, we have one being built right now, and then the new one that we asked for will replace the Sterling that currently up there that was discontinued in '05, and the engine was discontinued in '07.
It was a strong antique.
It, yeah. Good to get it out again. It's nice, it's a nice truck, but we just can't get some parts for it.
Anything, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Anything else under new business from anybody? Hearing nothing. We move on to, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And we have some staff updates.
This will come in executive session.
All right. We have visitor, anything you would like to, you want to say? Mearsfall?
Welcome.
Just hanging out.
Just hanging out. All right, we do have an executive session scheduled to maintain a motion to recess this meeting and move to executive session.
Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
It's getting late. I have to go on.
Second. 7:10, and then you. Do you not have any other business coming from the trustees? We have a motion to adjourn, and then we have a second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And we have some staff updates.
This will come in executive session.
All right. We have visitor, anything you would like to, you want to say? Mearsfall?
Welcome.
Just hanging out.
Just hanging out. All right, we do have an executive session scheduled to maintain a motion to recess this meeting and move to executive session.
Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
It's getting late. I have to go on.
Second. 7:10, and then you. Do you not have any other business coming from the trustees? We have a motion to adjourn, and then we have a second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And we have some staff updates.
This will come in executive session.
All right. We have visitor, anything you would like to, you want to say? Mearsfall?
Welcome.
Just hanging out.
Just hanging out. All right, we do have an executive session scheduled to maintain a motion to recess this meeting and move to executive session.